Welcome to the Heartland Township Planning Commission Meeting of August 13th, 2015. We would like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under your head indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Grissom, would you take role for us, please?
Sure. Chairperson Fox?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Jeff Newsen?
Yes.
Ebsen? Secretary Keith Boyd? Ebsen? Joe Kalani?
Here.
Myself? Here. Michael Mitchell?
Here.
And then Tom Murphy?
Here.
All right. Thank you very much, Sue. Next up, item five, Approval of Meeting Minutes. We have none this evening, so we'll move to item six, which is our Call to the Public. Anyone?
No.
Meeting agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry. Item four, moved right ahead. One second here. Approval of our meeting agenda, please.
Still moved. Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close the motion carries. Now it's Call to the Public. I'm sorry. Wandering eyes. Good evening. If we could get your name and whatever you'd like to say.
Yes, sir. My name's Dale McKim. I live in Heritage Meadows, 11085 Matthew Lane. And tonight I'm here to voice my opposition to allowing a gas station at the Mug and Bops, or I think that's the name of it, at the corner of Clark and M-59. So, tonight I don't want to talk about speculating whether or not an underground tank may leak, but I do want to talk about something that we definitely know will absolutely happen. So, I wanted to discuss the significant health hazards gas stations pose to residents that live close to a gas station. From the Johns Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health dated October 7th of 2014, their research shows we should be paying much more attention to the small spills that routinely occur when you refill your vehicle's tank. Their study suggests that drops of fuel spilled at gas stations, which occur frequently with fill-ups, I know we've all done it. I've done it. I'm sure everybody in this room has done this. These cause long-term environmental damage to soil and groundwater in residential areas close to proximity to the stations. And if you remember correctly, the land between lots two and three of Heritage Meadows, there's actually a wetlands area, and it extends right into Heritage Meadows. Okay? So, keep that in mind. So, these researchers conservatively estimate that a typical gas station will spill 1,500 liters of gas every 10 years. So, this equates to essentially filling up 752-liter Coke bottles every decade and dumping it into the backyard of Heritage Meadows. Even if only a small percentage reaches the ground, this could be problematic because gasoline contains harmful chemicals, including benzene, which is a known human carcinogen. Therefore, I plead with this group to consider the health of the residents of Heritage Meadows and not allow a gas station to be developed on this site. Don't think of me, think of the kids. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Hello.
Hi. My name is Danielle Langenbruch. I'll spell it for the minute since my last name was butchered in one of them. L-A-N-G-E-N-B-R-U-C-H. I live in Heritage Meadows at 11012 Matthew Lane. And I'm not going to speak as long as I have in the past, but I was just looking online tonight on the website under the Planning Commission Regular Meeting Information link on the website, item 8A for Site Plan Number 531, the Speedway Site Plan with Special Land Use. And it said it was going to move to approve the site plan and under, conditioned on the following. And item number five said, "Any other conditions that the Planning Commission deems necessary." So, I'm here to also voice my objection to the gas station proposed at M-59 and Clark, and ask that the concerns that the residents have expressed should be looked at, and there should be conditions that are deemed necessary if that's going to be approved and going to be given the green light, and give it the same standard that looks like it's going to be applied to the Speedway Site Plan. There are several concerns that this construction brings to residents in Heritage Meadows and others in the community. Noise, pollution, whether it's noise pollution, gas pollution, increased potential for and risk of crime that comes with a 24-hour convenience store, light pollution, trash pickup in the middle of the night, the lack or unsuitable barrier, not enough barrier between the commercial property and the homes that border the site, the flooding potential to surrounding homes if and when the wetlands between lots two and three are filled in, as I believe is proposed and was approved by the DNR or DEQ. Residents are coming forward expressing our concerns about this construction. And I would ask that necessary measures be taken by this Planning Commission, and that the necessary conditions be placed on this proposed construction to address the major concerns that I and other residents have expressed about this proposed construction. I don't want to see this construction come. I haven't made that a secret. A 24-hour gas station with Dunkin' Donuts drive-through literally right in my backyard. But if it comes, then I'm asking and expecting you, the Planning Commission, to please do everything in your power to protect homeowners whose properties will be negatively impacted by this construction for decades and decades to come, by people who don't live in Heartland and whose lives and properties will not be negatively impacted by the approval of the site plan at 59 and Clark. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, we'll close.
My name's Jeff Gazeroski, also in Heritage Meadows, 2345 Matthew Court. I have a couple of paragraphs from a resident who could not make it tonight. So, I'll read that, and then I have a comment of my own. While discussing flooding at one of the previous meetings, one of the board members brought up the flood of your own parking lot. This happened due to a planning oversight. Imagine if Heritage Meadows, which is surrounded by wetlands, floods. Royal Oak flooded last year due to heavy rains and an insufficient draining system. Some of my family lives in Royal Oak, and I saw firsthand all of their belongings piled 10 feet high out on curb. Now, try to imagine an entire neighborhood being flooded out. Second paragraph. While at the last meeting, an employee asked for more money for maintaining the pathways behind this building. My family and I decided to check them out. While walking, we noticed the swamps and ponds with wildflowers growing around them. But what caught my eye were the dead trees that lined one of the swamps. These trees were planted for beautification. I know these were planned trees because they have support cables to hold them in place and also tag them with the name of the nursery that planted them. Will the same thing happen with the new development? Now, into my comments. A few weeks ago at your meeting, one of the three developers for the Mug and Bops said, and I quote, "We'll put the wall in place and landscaping to stop any sound." Any sound. I wish that were true. At the time, none of you challenged the gentleman who said that. Somebody could say, "Well, that just means you guys agree with them." I hope that's not the case. If you guys approve this facility going in, what you're saying is that the wall landscaping will completely deaden a passing diesel truck that is two times the daily allowable sound levels based on Heartland ordinances during the daytime, three times at night. That that wall and landscaping will deaden a motorcycle, which is three and a half times during the day and four and a half times during the day, greater than allowable by Heartland ordinance. And a car horn, which is four and a half times and five and a half times, day and night, more than the allowable Heartland township ordinance. What you are preparing to approve is clearly, will be clearly, in repeated violation to Heartland noise ordinances. And it's great ammunition for any residents. I'm not talking about myself, but any residents who might want to take legal action in this matter. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Hi. My name is Lynn Dotson. I live at 2376 Lorena Lane in Heritage Meadows. I'm mostly concerned with the fact that when we bought our homes in the subdivision, we were not supposed to be surrounded by convenience stores and Myers and all these businesses, including the ice rink behind us. We're one little subdivision surrounded by commercial development. Now, why we were allowed to build our homes there is unknown to me, but when I purchased my home, I was understanding that an office or something like that would be going on that corner.
It was always commercial.
It wasn't commercial convenience.
Well, it's commercial.
Well...
And you really need to...
Regardless...
This is where...
Regardless, I'm here to express my concern about the traffic and everything else on Clark Road.
I just want to go on record with you. It's been commercial for like 40 years.
Yeah. That's great. It's great.
Okay. So, but you're misstating the facts.
I was under the assumption that you are changing the zoning.
No. No. It's commercial right now.
Okay. Well, then I'll continue.
Yep.
Fine. Your entrance is on Clark Road with no left turn for the exit at the gas station?
That I agree with.
Where do you think that traffic's going to end up? In our subdivision, going around the block and coming back out. You know, it's not a freeway. Kids play there. You know...
Clark Road?
I don't know if you've driven down Clark Road.
I drive it real long.
It's 75 miles an hour, as far as I can tell.
Okay.
Because these cars are drive fast.
Why don't you...
These people zip out of the road.
Excuse me. Will this let you finish your comments? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. What I'm saying, though, is if they're not allowed to turn left out of that clip gas station, they're going to turn right. They're going to turn in our sub, come in one side and go out the other. That's going to increase traffic in our subdivision. And to me, that's not acceptable either. So, I'm just voicing my opinion. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Last call. Okay. We'll close the Call to the Public. We have no public hearing this evening, so we'll move on to item 8A, Site Plan Application Number 531, Speedway Site Plan with Special Land Use. And I think what we'll do is invite the applicant up, which they are here. And let's turn it over to our Planning Director, David Campo, and let him take the floor. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
This application is back before the Planning Commission for the second time. The first time was the public hearing that was held on June 25th. That happened to be the meeting that I was unable to attend due to pneumonia diagnosis. So, but I know that at that meeting, the Planning Commission spent, what, the better part of two hours discussing this application and vetting it very thoroughly. And the applicant was given a lot of good direction and good feedback, and they've taken that direction, taken that feedback, revised their plans accordingly, resubmitted to the township, and they are now back before this Planning Commission with their revised submittal. And what they are seeking is a recommendation for approval for the special land use from the Township Board, along with site plan approval from this Planning Commission. Because this is a proposed gas station within a general commercial zoning district, it is a special land use within that zoning district, and only the Township Board can approve a special land use subsequent to a recommendation from the Planning Commission. So, the Planning Commission would have the option this evening of making the recommendation for approval for the special land use. The proposal itself is located at the southeast corner of M-59 and old US-23, just east of US-23, on the existing Speedway site. What Speedway is proposing to do is demolish their existing site, their existing store, their existing gas canopy, and replace it with a larger store and a, more of a linear canopy than what they have now. What they have now is 12 double-stacked fuel dispensers. And what they're proposing is 18 linear fuel dispensers rather than the stacked dispensers. And we'll look at their site plan so we can get a better sense of what that means. The, as I mentioned, the Planning Commission did, took, take a hard look at this back on June 25th, and gave the applicant a number of comments. And the Planning Department's review letter, which you have in front of you and is dated August 6th, goes back over all those same comments that the Planning Commission discussed back on June 25th in what turned out to be a 20-page review letter. But what my recommendation would be is, and what the Planning Department has provided, is toward the end of that 20-page review letter is a summary of the main points that the Planning Commission sought be addressed by the applicant on a revised submittal. And so, what the applicant has done is provided a list of the, what is it, 21 changes that they've made to the site plan since that June 25th meeting. And their hope is that those 21 changes address all of the conversations that this Planning Commission had on June 25th, such that the applicant could move closer to an approval. I, the Planning Department feels that those revisions that have been made since that June 25th meeting are sufficient to satisfy everything that the Planning Commission discussed at that meeting with a few items that I think we need to address specifically, and I know we will tonight. But overall, the Planning Department's review letter, at its conclusion, recommends that this Planning Commission does make a recommendation to the Township Board for approval of the special land use, subject to some conditions. At this point, I could take a pause and see if the Planning Commission has any specific questions for myself or with regard to the review letter that our department has drafted. But what may be a good idea as well is to turn it over to the applicant, because I would think they could speak probably better than I of all the changes that they've made since this proposal last came before this Planning Commission.
I think that would be a good idea with one comment first. I plan on taking the Planning Commission and the audience through your, the 21 points that start on page 18 of the letter. So, if you'd like to summarize the things you've done, I'm going to go through them point by point. We're going to check them all off. So, I don't know what your presentation is, but...
Pretty much point by point. So, if you want to do that first, we can elaborate.
Well, then, why don't we do this? Why don't we go to page 18 of the Planning Department's letter, which is outlining the 21 points to cover? And why don't we just do this with you, our Planning Director and the Planning Commission?
Okay.
And check them off and have any conversations necessary along the way.
Sounds good.
Okay. So, we're on page 18. About half the way down, you'll see the header, the July 20th, 2015 Applicant Correspondence. So, under Landscaping Comments, item number one, the dumpster relocated and the fence was added along M-59. If you recall, we had some discrepancies where the dumpster was and...
Can we go to our slides, just so we can...
Go to your laptop?
Yeah, it'd be easier. Thank you.
We should be saying what you're saying.
Okay. Yeah, for the update, the base file on the landscaping plan was the comment, there is the revised landscaping plan. And I do know that there were still a few minor discrepancies left with change of species that we did address and resubmitted today just for clarification. So, those were addressed. So, we did update the base file. We did show the dumpster relocated behind the building that was shown on the site plans, but not the landscaping. And then, we did add the fencing in this location here on the landscaping plan to match the site plan that was submitted.
Okay. Is everybody satisfied with that one?
Yes.
Okay. Item two, two southern islands on the Fountain Square Lot, replacing the curb and the gutter, adding a note, protecting the landscaping or replacing if it's damaged.
We did that. These two islands right here, as you can see, there's a call out, and that was added to the plans. And it was called out to protect existing landscaping. All the curb and gutter will be new for those islands. So, if they cannot protect it, it will be replaced as it currently is to planning the same species.
Is everyone satisfied with that?
Yes.
Item three, gnarly spruce behind the building might be an issue with the growth. There was some discrepancy in notes on white spruce or some other spruce I had not heard of, Black Hills variety, whatever that is. What was that discrepancy?
Well, it's not a discrepancy. What it is, is there's a variety of a type of white spruce. And I can, maybe let Mike elaborate more on that, but it's a type of white spruce that is actually, it grows more up and narrow, so it won't grow out as wide. And we also did move those eight foot off of the back of curb so that when they do grow, they will not overgrow into the driveway. So, it was a white spruce that was showing. It was just Ms. Grissom had asked us to revise it to be the specific variety of the Black Hills.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay. We're okay with that.
Are those one going to be, are they going to be watered?
We require irrigation.
Everywhere is irrigation.
Yep.
Irrigation will be placed during construction.
Item four, at the top of page 19, add some landscaping on the north side of the detention pond.
Yeah. We did, very limited with where the fence lies on the property line, but we did manage in a few locations. We added three larger trees to try to help at least soften that fence in that northern line.
Would we be correct that the, what would that be, since this is kind of upside down?
North is down.
The other side of that fence, that's M dot right-of-way, correct?
Yeah. The property line is the dash line right there, which is M dot right-of-way.
Right. So, anything you would do, you would have to keep it on that side of the fence?
Correct. Yeah. And the fence for the pond runs very, it's just on the other side of the trees there. So, we did include three trees. And then, the fence jogged in this section here, so we were able to, you know, include where we could, try to add some additional trees.
Any comments, Sue?
No.
You want to find it out?
Better. Yeah. At least to get that layer in front of the pond.
Okay. So, I guess we're good with item four. Item five, two species, the point I thought would have issues surviving creeping lily turf and London plane trees.
Yep. And we did, we took that suggestion, and we changed the creeping lily turf to the purple winter creeper, and then the London plane trees to a red oak.
Okay. And Dave, you got a comment? Inconsistencies relative to the pages on LS 1 and 2?
We do, but I think there's an update...
There's a couple of them there, I should know.
I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
There's an update to that comment. We were able to discuss some of these inconsistencies with Ms. Gaus. And they were simply inconsistencies of the species identified on one sheet. Those changes weren't carried over onto the second sheet, but they have, those sheets have since been revised as of today to address those inconsistencies. And I think that as long as all those inconsistencies were addressed in the ones that we got today, which we will double-check, then we should be in good shape.
Okay. Item six, larger canopy trees along the front where the triangular easement is located.
And that's in this area right here. We did add two more larger trees. And then, we also, one of the comments was that there was some gapping in the shrubs along that area. So, we did fill in the mulch beds and the shrubs as well to make it a little more beefy along the front there.
Sue?
Yeah?
Yeah.
Sure.
We have a requirement that we need to have that perimeter screening, which later I'll talk to you a little more about, but we see what you did. It looks good.
Okay. I think it's worth putting on record that Commissioner Grissom used her own time to work with the applicant on the landscaping plan, which is very much appreciated.
Thank you. Okay. So, we're on to item seven, Provide an Environmental Memo on What Is Occurring with the Mobile Site for Cleanup and Monitoring. Let me see this.
Yeah. And we did provide that memo. And we also have someone from Cardinal ATC here, who is the environmental consultant, if there are questions specific, environmentally specific to the site.
Are there any questions specific to the site or the memo?
A summary of where things stand with the former mobile gas station site?
Could we get your name and...
My name is Roy Line. I work for Cardinal ATC. Your question is the remaining impacts from the mobile site?
Correct.
There is remaining impact from the mobile site and near the former underground storage tanks, which were removed in 2008. And that impact, according to my data, is very close to the USD cavity, former USD cavity, and probably extends a little bit to the right-of-way.
Is it something that would need to be mitigated prior to putting surface parking on top of that?
Well, our current plan would be, before any construction takes place, we would do some pre-construction soil borings and groundwater monitoring of the existing wells to get a better idea of what contamination actually does exist. And then, during construction, we would move, remove and dispose of any impacted groundwater and soils that we encounter. Afterwards, we would, again, put in some new monitor wells to monitor it and assess the risk and provide any corrective action that needs to be done to get it to closure. I would estimate within two years of the construction.
Okay. Now, in the past, we've had a couple of sites here in the township, and I know that some of the fix was, don't disturb it. You know, we, it was approved for them to put their parking lot over that. Is that, is this site different than that, or...
We would assess and remediate any risks. It would be consistent with MDEQ rules. And typically, those rules are pretty stringent to eliminate all risk.
Okay.
So, will there be impact remaining on site? I can't say. If there is, it would put in proper restrictions to make sure there is no risk in the future.
And the new tanks are all monitored differently than the old tanks, and any leaks would be discovered early on? Can you talk at all about how those tanks are monitored?
The tanks that we'll be installing are all double-wall with a sensor in the interstitial space between the walls. So, that, it's a moisture sensor. So, if any moisture gets into that space, it sends an alarm to both the store and to our headquarters in Ohio.
What is the repair for that, if that should exist?
If it's, if it's something that they can fix on-site, sometimes we've had...
Can we, I'm sorry. Can we have you guys make sure we're talking into the mic, just so we catch all this on the, thank you.
If it's something that they can fix on-site with a patch, that can be done. Otherwise, it might escalate all the way to replacing the tanks.
And so, maybe it's on the plan, the actual, the location of the tanks, are they underneath the asphalt? If they are, so there's an access to them, or they might actually have to go through the parking lot.
The tanks are located in this location right here, and they are, there's a concrete slab over top of the tanks. It is off to the sides, but it does not impact vehicle traffic.
On this current plan, can you highlight where the old mobile tanks reside?
Tanks, well, the mobile site, obviously, is this site here.
Right.
Do you know where the tanks are specifically within the site?
They were removed. They were removed. So, remaining impact, the, I don't know, from the mobile, is right about there.
And when you say impact, that's impacted the soil that's still in the ground?
So, I'm wondering, is this the new piece?
Yes. Get us a new drive.
And the old one is...
That Fountain Square, right? There's still a site to the left.
So, right about there.
So, if we haven't taken any soil borings currently to know what the effect of those soil samples are, and you're not going to do it until you start construction, what if we have an issue?
Well, they, they, they will be responsible.
The way of the...
They're responsible for any release.
I know, but don't we have the cart in front of the horse here? I mean, if I don't know what the soil condition is, why am I approving a site plan?
Well, they're not going to be able to proceed until it's cleaned up. If they have to dig halfway to China, that'll be their problem. I'm guessing that you must have an idea how much cost you're going to have in that.
Well, I don't personally, but we did, we did do some assessment during the purchasing of this property. And we do have some older reports that we can get from the MDEQ, which mobile has completed, our mobile consultant has completed. So, we do have an idea, like I said and I pointed out, where the impact is. We would go in and do a little more intensive soil boring, a lot more soil boring, so that when they get out there with their excavation crew, we're already going to know the area that we're going to excavate and get rid of any impacted soils there. Mike, what they do is, before they bought the property, they would have done a Phase One and Phase Two environmental assessment. They wouldn't have bought the property without doing that. And then, they're required under, probably either they filed it with the DEQ or they set it on it. But at the end of the day, it's, they can't make it any worse than what it was. If they do, they have to, they have to fix it. So, they may end up having to mitigate.
So, so you technically would have to have their side off to proceed any farther? Once the, once the soil borings are analyzed... Once the, once the soil borings are analyzed, and if they're deemed suitable, you know, with removing X amount of soil and replenishing it, or whatever, uh, whatever the decision is, you will receive an approval which allows you to continue.
Correct.
You can't continue without that approval. You can't construct any change on this property without an agreement of what needs to be done to the, to the property, soils, et cetera, groundwater.
There is already, uh, liability in place with the contaminant there, so Speedway is already planning on addressing the, that impact.
Okay.
And that, that stems from the, DEQ has a release number associated with the old mobile station, and that release is open, and so the DEQ considers this site a problem until, until we submit a closure report where we assess and mitigate all the risks.
Okay, and, uh, thank you, because I, I think you answered my question then. And so once you've got a closure, it states, from their point of perspective, you could move on.
Right.
And the closure report may require them to continue monitoring.
Okay. And, very good. I would add one more thing, and the DPW director could probably speak to this more intelligently than I can, but, um, you know, because this property is within the township's groundwater protection, or wellhead protection area, because it, we're within the area of impact where the township draws our municipal water, um, we are a party to that, uh, DEQ matter, uh, and, you know, we, we have requirements as a municipal water provider that we have to meet with the DEQ, and part of that, meeting those requirements is, is complying with the DEQ on sites such as this. Um, so between the, the private parties and the township, and the DEQ, and our, our water consultant, AMAC, that we work through to comply with the DEQ, um, this is a, a matter that, that has been resolved for all parties.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other environmental questions? Item seven on the list. Item eight, add no left turn sign at Speedway Drive at 59.
Um, yeah, we did add the no left turn sign. It's actually located right in that location there, um, so it will be visible for the vehicles as they're exiting the site.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on that one? Item nine, add the pilaster fence detail to the plants. So that'd be the brick columns?
Yep, and that is the fence that is located, um, in this section right here along M 59. So it'll have a pilaster, the wrought iron, and then a pilaster, and then it has a gap for like a tree planting, and then it has another section. So it's not all the way across, there's, um, a section, and then a gap, a section, and then a gap, in order to allow some planting in the middle, break it up, so.
Right, and that is on the plan?
Yes.
Satisfied?
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, the fence that's like right in there, what is that?
That's the wall.
That fence there, which would be, um, the second, number 10, um, that is the solid wall fence?
Right over there, thank you.
That is more similar to the fences that match across the street.
I, I think part of the issue there is that they're both labeled as detail H10.
Yeah.
And so that, I know created some confusion for us.
Sorry?
No, that's, that's fine.
Oh, it's okay. I just kept going back to H10, and I said that they're drawn different, so I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
The question I have, the backside of the wall, does it look like the front side?
Yes, it looks, both sides, it'll be the same view.
If we approve that construction method there, it's going to have the score on the backside also? Or is the score only on the front?
Yes, they could, they could score both sides.
Okay.
So there's, that's an option to score, or they will score?
I will double check on that, but I don't see why they could not. I mean, the score itself is, it's just in the...
Is the color on both sides too?
The color is, they're integrally colored, the units are all the way through, so that that way, there's no hands of the color washing or any...
Yeah, I mean, the dark and the variations wrap around the sides, it's not a front only thing?
No, it is not.
Okay.
So I'm sure you, we could request to have a double score. I don't think that would be an issue.
Well, I think it's important, if we get to the point of approving that, that it is, because then we're back to that, it's looking like cinder block.
Yeah.
And I know we're going to have a conversation about the, the building material and the building itself, and I would assume that wherever that conversation winds up, we would want to see those same materials, that same treatment, on the, the wall and on the pilasters for the, the fence.
Yes. So you're going to put the scored brick, scored block, on the pilasters and the wall?
Okay.
Okay?
And that's the dumpster enclosure too?
And the dumpster enclosure, all of them.
All masonry.
Okay.
Okay, item 11, add the trim color around the windows to the building elevations.
Um, that was done, uh, it, the, actually, the alum, all the way around is just, um, a clear coat aluminum that will be for the dividers and for the trim around the exit window.
So silver.
Yes, silver.
Um, item 12, revise building elevations to show a smaller size quick brick.
And that was, uh, done as well within the elevations that were submitted, shows the, it shows what you're seeing here with the four, the 16 inch block that scored, is what it showed on.
Is this where we should talk about the brick?
Yes, please.
Okay.
So I'll, and I'll start, if you allow me. So we, we have had some conversations since that meeting on the 25th with the applicant, uh, about the brick material, um, because part of what the planning commission was looking for was, uh, if, if we can't get to the traditional natural clay brick, um, as opposed to the, the tinted, uh, concrete, then we want to get as far as we can with having the, um, the tinted block have the, the look of the traditional brick. So what the applicant is proposing to do, and they've obviously brought a sample here this evening, is provide this, um, that, that's the color blend that they're looking to provide, which does have some variation in the color, and when we were talking about the, uh, the scored block, so what you have there is an eight by 16 block, um, no, pardon me, a four by 16 block, but with a score, obviously the vertical score in the middle, to give it the, the four by eight look. So the score would have the mortar put in it, just as the mortar would be put around the, the outside of the brick, um, and it would, if the planning commission would agree, uh, would, would give it, what they're trying to achieve is the natural clay brick look, and then it would be up to the planning commission whether that's, uh, that satisfies the intent of the zoning ordinance, which we should be clear, uh, does require natural clay brick. Um, so they would be asking for a deviation from that if the planning commission is satisfied that the alternative, uh, satisfies the intent. I don't know if you, uh, I know we talked about different blends in the color, uh, and I think Speedway is, is, um, open to, to exploring other color blends, but this is the, I believe the one that they have on the table this evening is, is what is, is being proposed.
Yeah, I know, David, you did mention that other sites, as I said, you saw it had a pink issue to the color on the brick. Um, most of the sites that have been done, um, this is obviously the first time we've ever done the 6100 building, and it is the first one I've personally worked on where they proposed the promenade blend. Um, all the ones in the past I've worked on have been the heritage blend, which is probably what you are seeing, um, on existing sites that you're seeing today, that are already constructed.
Okay.
It may be difficult to see, it may be difficult to see the difference, given the lighting in this room and all.
And I, and I don't know that the planning commission should pick the bright color. I think the applicant should propose it, and if it doesn't work, then we say it doesn't work, but...
And then that is what's being proposed, that blend is on the table.
We can also, though, if, if you look at what's complementing it on the other side, you have, you have the Chase man, uh, Chase Bank, you also have...
The shops at Walden Woods Kitty Corner.
Oh, Walgreens. Walgreens is a much darker, as long with the, the Chase Bank. I mean, if you look at that corridor, the brick, it does make sense.
Yeah.
Would have liked to have seen Walden Woods go a little, little darker brick, but...
Yeah. I, I'm one of the people that's brought this up. No indication where I'm landing on it, but I'll tell you what I believe is happening here, what's being proposed, and what the ordinance requires. Um, I don't think that still looks like brick. Okay, that's personal opinion. Brick is still not shaped four by eight. That's not a brick size. It, and I believe the ordinance was developed with clay brick as a requirement, because there is a difference in its look. If you look at Myers, that's clay brick. If you look at Walmart, that's masonry block, which is what this is. Doesn't mean in the end I'm not there, but that is not clay brick, and I think that we, if we go with this, we should on the submittals, have all the percentages changed on the chart to show zero percent, because in fact, the ordinance says clay brick, and the percentages showing are 80%, 90%, and it's not. And the ordinance, the ordinance is very specific to clay, and there is a difference. If you put a clay brick next to that, you'll see the difference.
Right.
So, so you know the difference. So, I, I add those comments, and, and, um, that, that's what I have to say about the brick until I hear anything else.
So the applicant would thereby be seeking a deviation from the building materials requirements of the section 5.24 of the zoning ordinance, and the planning commission has the discretion to allow such variances, or allow such deviations, um, if it can be demonstrated to the satisfaction of the planning commission that what is being proposed satisfies the spirit and the intent of those building materials and architectural standards.
Certainly the shape of it's better with the score than it is without.
It does bring it down in scale, and when you fill it with the mortar, it will look more like, but that normal standard brick is not four by eight, right?
Yeah, and that was a building done with the scored brick, just to kind of give you an idea of the appearance. I'm trying to include a picture.
Does that have mortar in the, uh, joints?
Yes, it does have mortar in the joints.
Oh, I, maybe I can see it on this side.
It, it does have all the mortar in the joints, and it, it looks, you can't tell that they're a separate, that they're not one unit. It, it looks just like they're an individual.
We should go, uh, visit that location.
Yeah, I see palm trees.
Is it palm trees?
Yeah.
Not now.
Yeah.
That's true.
December?
Well, the, the brick that's being propos, I, I look at that, and I almost think I remember Walmart picking quick brick, promenade, and I don't know why. I think this is exactly what Walmart is.
I would, I think that you are correct. I think that one is a promenade blend. Uh, they obviously don't have the score, would be the difference.
Right, right, and we didn't want it on that building because of the size and the mass of the building, which is why you use a jumbo brick versus a standard size. But there were reasons we allowed it on that building where we didn't with others in some of the smaller buildings. Walmart did a lot for the community, and in exchange for land donations and boulevarding M 59, and an exceptional landscape plan that exceeded the ordinance by leaps and bounds, we, we did some trading back and forth. So that is how the Walmart building got to be what it is today, or the site did.
And I think that's important to know, um, ask why there was trade-offs and sort of things like that.
There are benefits, I'm sure, I think you touched on it, there are construction benefits, there's time and money, and that would be the reason, probably the two big reasons you would use this versus...
Exactly.
Clay brick.
Two walls, or clay brick to build it.
Right. Or you could, right, or as Myers did, they actually built poured concrete walls and then face bricked with clay, which is what they had done. So, any comments on that?
All four sides of the building are predominantly this material. True?
Correct.
I know in earlier discussions, there was talk of maybe having siding on the south side of the, uh, yes, what would be the south side of the building, um...
There's a little bit just around the entry door.
Yes.
Like there is over the entry feature on the front.
I feel like we saw early concepts, uh, with more, more metal siding, or, yeah.
Earlier ones that we, we had gone back and forth with prior to submitting our official submittal, they did have some where it was showing some siding along the rear and the sides of the building. Um, we did revise all of those to show the quick brick material, except for the doors for the accent areas.
So Larry, for clarification, um, what does Walmart have on their building? Is it this product?
I think it is exactly that. I think it's that product and that color.
With the exception of the score.
With the exception of the score, and of course they have stacked stone paired with it.
And Meyer has a clay brick?
Correct. To the best of my recollection, Walmart is the only non-clay brick building in the township. This will be the second.
And so this is the first building that you've used this material on?
We've used the material on multiple buildings, just that not this color. Uh, the ones that, like, I know they mentioned a pink issue, that would have been a heritage blend, which is a different color scheme than the promenade.
Scoring it down the middle, is that something Speedway's done before?
I don't believe so.
And anywhere there's brick on the property, this is a brick that's huge?
Correct.
Even on the landscape?
Correct, yeah.
When I look at the rendering, that, or the...
No, it doesn't look like that.
It doesn't look like that.
Well, it's just like you don't pick anything for color off of a brochure, you need to see it, because I don't think the computer can create that color. The building looks brown, and the, and the, but I don't think that's any contention on your part of anything, I think it's just the way the printer prints.
It just seems like it looks like what's on here would, would be like a regular brick, because it's longer. When you look at those, there's only...
Yep, it's not the same module, it's a third module. That's one thing.
That's, that's why.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're a little problematic.
Yeah. You know, I just don't know how to, I mean, I want to say yes, but I mean, I don't know how to allow it, when that's the ordinance, the way you clearly stated, that every building in our community has the clay. Now with the intent, what we're looking at doesn't look like clay. The colors, like you were saying, I think are fine, whatever, but the module, when you see it, it doesn't look like a clay brick. Looks like a tile, a concrete, but if that's what our whole community wanted to have, that's not what I see as a comment. So I'm trying to figure out how do we work together, and where do we go from here, is my comment.
I'm hearing comments on color, and I'm hearing comments on size, um, dimensions of, of the, of the brick. Is there any value in coming to a consensus on one and then moving on to the next, or...
So, Sue, I would agree with Sue, that, you know, the reason that we have the certain brick that's in the ordinance, there's a reason behind that, and if the, if this look is not that look, I myself don't know where to go with it, because it does have a look that's, you know, it's, it's larger in size, um, it's just different in the entire look, the proportions, and, um, I guess that would be my comment. I would agree with Sue. I'm not exactly sure where to go with it.
I'll add, because I'm the one that has been kind of vocal, but I've been around here the longest on these. I think the project has a lot of merit to it, and I think that the site will look substantially better. It's just that you're going to put this building up that's going to be around longer than I am on the face of this earth, and if you look around what we have on the buildings we have, there is a difference to me, and it's not anything against your program or, or your proposal. I'm conceptually having a harder time with it, um, and I think that's probably...
Yeah.
...what I'm agreeing with the two of you. I, I think the building architecture works, you know, there's a lot of good things here. It's getting over that hump, and, and maybe you don't see that, because you, you know, build hundreds of these a year and all those types of things, but, you know, this is, this is Heartland, a town of 15,000 people, that's put a lot of pride in what we've done here, and I'm, I'm having a hard time grasping this one. So, it doesn't mean it's a no at all, but I just, I'm just trying to grab a hold of it.
So I agree that there are huge benefits to this new fueling station at the corner. I think your plan looks great. Um, this is a, this is our primary corner in Heartland, and, uh, everyone's going to be very excited to see this building. I'm there too many times a week, right? I was just there, and, um, as I'm filling up, I'm realizing, wow, how nice is this going to be to have all these bays compared to this double stacking that we have today? So I think that everything that you're doing is, um, I, is, is great, and I agree with Larry 100%, but I'm in the same spot there when it comes to, um, to the brick.
Mike, any comments?
Yeah, um, firstly, the brick doesn't bother me like that. Uh, I think with the score mark, with adding the mortar to the score, to make it appear to be like individual brick, uh, sit, and especially, I feel that way from the standpoint, this building doesn't sit next to any of the other buildings where you could do a, an eye-to-eye comparison and say, why is this one different from the next one? It's, it's a standalone building, and, uh, personally, I don't know how many people would look at it and say, it doesn't look like a... like a standard size brick to me. And to be honest with you, I haven't even realized that Walmart was different than Meyer's. So I guess I don't look at the building that tightly when I walk in, so I don't have any problem with it.
Okay. Joe?
I'm kind of leaning towards the, because of what we have at that corner, as I come up twenty, you know, on M-59, I like what I see on the one side, on the north side, which is the nice clay brick that I observed with Rawrings and Chase, which only Arby's is a little better. But I would go more, I'd be more in line with the clay brick.
All right, is there something you can do with that?
Well, I just, I think, I believe that perhaps looking at these units sitting on a table, if not giving you the context of what it would look like as well as I can, I have images of a store that we recently constructed in Chelsea, Michigan.
Are you doing the one up in, it looks like right off Jolly Road in Lansing as well? Are you doing that one?
Yeah, it's open now.
Yeah. I was there about a month ago, so I hope it goes open now.
All the masonry on, well, all the masonry on this store is the quick brick and it's actually in that other blend. So there's an image of what this brick looks like in, in use of the pilaster, similar to what we're proposing along, I'm sorry, I'm a landscape architect, took a lot of pictures of the landscape.
We like all that landscape.
As long as you keep it alive.
Right.
You start to see that, by the time you get this store built, the coursing is, I mean, instead of three courses of brick and an eight inch, or three, you know, three courses and eight inches, we have two. For a commercial application, it looks, it looks fine. I mean, I believe it's difficult to tell that that's not a smaller brick. There's enough coursing and texture in the building that it looks, I mean, that's not a bad looking masonry wall.
Well, should we jump to thirteen and come back to twelve? Let's see what we get on everything else. All right, item thirteen, no electronic digital price signs are permitted. Add the note.
Yeah, we did add a note on the, underneath, on the SSG, the note, I have, we did add it, just underneath both signs. And the image that you see here actually does not show the LED, but we did add a note underneath, it's kind of hard to see on this slide, but right in this location, calling out that no digital signs are permitted. Speedway is aware of that and when they apply for the sign permits and everything, we'll make sure that everything complies.
Okay. So we won't be coming back and asking for it?
Nope.
All right.
And that is, a key part of the conversation is that there would have to be a separate sign permit application for the monument sign, the wall signage, the canopy signage. So I just want it clear to the applicant that there is another application process for that.
All right.
Despite the fact that it is shown on these plans.
Okay. Item fourteen, remove the drive-through area on the equipment plan.
We did do that. We updated the plan. As you can see here, it no longer is in this section of the plan. Removed it, updated.
Item fifteen, add the light bollards spec and detail to the plans.
Yeah, we did add an additional sheet to the set with JZ three, which has the light bollard that will be along the front sidewalk, spec sheet, and then as well the seating area.
Both of those, I noticed on the light bollard on the page, there's four colors available, but have you picked one yet? Because I don't know if it's called out which color you want.
I...
Is there a dark bronze?
Yes, furniture, it'll match the furniture.
Okay. And there was no color on the furniture.
That's why it matches.
Like dark brown?
Brown, dark bronze color.
So just if we could get those notes on the print when you... Any other questions on the bollards or the furniture guys? Okay, item seventeen, add a note to the plans that states the freestanding parking lot lights are full cutoff.
Yeah, those notes were added to Z one. We added the A six note, which has the freestanding parking lot signs calling out as full cutoff and then also the, jumping ahead to the canopy, but that the same note calls out the canopy signs are recessed as well.
Okay, and just a note, in the paper submittals you gave the packets, there were no lighting plans. We had to use just the electronics. So if we're going to sign ultimately plans that are finalized and they'll need to be complete with lighting?
No problem. Yeah, the lighting plans did not change. I thought they would, I thought they were being carried over, so that was my misunderstanding. It's not a problem. They are the same ones that were submitted with the original packet that were looked at.
Okay. Do we have a color on those lights?
I may have contributed to that misunderstanding now that she says that. I probably said, let's not print out the same things that have already been printed out once before. Let's just look at the things that have been modified, so I'm now remembering that.
Well, when we get to the end and you ask me to sign something, if this gets to that, we'll need a complete set included.
Understood.
How's that?
Not a problem.
And I didn't see a color on those light fixtures. Do we know what color those are?
Those are also...
They're all what?
Dark bronze.
Okay. So we'll just make sure we got that on the plans. So you said you've covered the recessed canopy lights that's on there?
Yep, that's in the same note, A six on sheet Z one.
But we didn't change those pages.
Nope, they're the, well, no, Z one is the site plan that's up for now.
Okay, all right.
And we just added some of the notes. They are already in the spec sheet.
They are in there?
There doesn't, they don't call it cutoff, like, it's a different terminology and there's numbers and this and that, and I don't know at all, to be honest, as far as the ins and outs of lighting. But they did say that they were cutoffs, but I didn't, they didn't modify it because that's not their terminology. So we did add a note to our Z one sheet underneath our general notes up on the top, just to make sure it was called out that they are cutoff.
Okay. Item nineteen, add a note, no TVs will be located on top of the dispensers.
Yep, note A seven was also added to the Z one plan.
And then no speakers or music playing outside other than corresponding from the attendant to the customer.
Correct, and that was also added as under note A seven on the Z one plan.
Okay. Do you guys have any other questions on any of those? Looking at the letter, there are, under the heading of recommendation, the planning department's got five points and we just need to make sure we cover all those so that we get them recorded in the minutes that we're making a determination that the landscaping plan as proposed satisfies the intent of section five point one one despite some proposed deviations from a strict application of its standards. Is everybody in agreement that the landscaping plan is fine?
Yes.
Okay. Item two, a determination that the illumination levels under the proposed canopy are acceptable despite exceeding the maximums of section five point one three. David, I'd like you to talk on that for the audience, because I know they're concerned about lighting in another site.
Sure. So the township zoning ordinance has lighting standards for parking lots in general, but then lighting standards specifically for under a gas station canopy. And those lighting levels under a gas station canopy say a maximum of five-foot candles at a height five feet off the ground. Speedway, very earliest, very earliest in this process said five-foot candles under a gas station canopy is far too dim, that, you know, when you're standing under a gas station canopy and you're going through your wallet to find the right credit card, you're punching in your PIN number, trying to find the right bill in your wallet, whatever it is, there's a certain level of lighting that you need to have to be able to make those transactions. So the planning department staff did some research, both, you know, from the office but then in the field. And part of that research included going out to a lot of the gas stations along M-59 and in this area in general, and measuring light levels under gas station canopies after dark, obviously. And what we found in our findings are summarized in a memo that was included in your packet, was that we would, as staff, concur that a maximum of five-foot candles under a gas station canopy is in fact far too dim. We looked at a lot of gas stations, like I said, along the M-59 corridor, going as far as White Lake to the east and City Hall to the west. We found some gas station canopies that were, in our opinion, too dim, and we found some that were far too bright. The ones that were too dim, we felt were in the ten-foot candle range, which even that would be twice what the township permits. And the ones that were exceedingly bright were up in the ninety, one-hundred foot candles under the gas station canopy. And there's a safety implication with that. Part of being, you know, you pull off of a dark highway into an overly lit gas station canopy, you get your gas, you make your transaction, in the meantime, your eyes have adjusted to lighting levels that you would find in a bright room such as this, and you pull back out onto a dark highway, your eyes have not adjusted, and what none of us want to see happen is you get clobbered by the truck coming the other way because your eyes haven't adjusted. So we want people to be safe under the canopy while they make these transactions, but at the same time, we don't want them to be safe when they pull back out onto a dark highway. After much research, as I said, both in the office and the field, the recommendation of staff is that the appropriate level of lighting under a gas station canopy is somewhere in the neighborhood of the mid twenties to the mid thirties. We've found a number of stations along the M-59 corridor that are in that window, and we think if the planning commission and anyone else were to go take a look at those and stand under those canopies, they would agree, yes, this is the appropriate level of lighting. It's not too dim, but it's not overly bright. And what Speedway is proposing is a lighting level under the canopy that is within that threshold of what the planning department is recommending to be the appropriate lighting level under a canopy. The planning department, excuse me, the planning commission does have the opportunity to deviate from a strict application of the lighting levels based on a number of factors, and so the planning commission would have to make a determination on this one. But it's the recommendation of staff that the lighting levels under the canopy that Speedway is proposing are appropriate.
Comments?
This sounds good.
So we're okay with the lighting levels?
I appreciate the planning department taking the time to do that study, especially with the other, you know, fueling stations that are going to be coming in.
Yes, I agree.
It was the right time to do it.
Well, it was a good idea and while we couldn't explain the number we had in the ordinance, the number wasn't as relevant as what do we want it to be? And so we went out and found out what we wanted it to be, and thank you for being in that range.
Just real quick, because worth noting too, that with the lighting technology of today, the LED lights, the color rendering is much better than what it has been in the past with the sodium lights. You don't get the yellow tint, you get the true color rendering. So that's another factor to looking at lighting levels is considering the improvements in lighting methods in general over the last ten, twelve years.
Well, and the numbers drop off substantially once you get out from the canopy. So by the time we get to the property lines out in the areas, we're dropping almost to nothing. So...
Larry?
Yes.
Can I interrupt you for a second? So you're kind of working through the recommendation and the first one you went through was the landscape. So I'm thinking when you said that, that means all issues?
Would you like to bring...
There was just one other thing, and I apologize, because you guys did a great job, you know, working offline. But when I looked at the plant material list, which is fine, the sizes of the plants don't meet our ordinance. So for an example, the canopy trees, our ordinance requires a three inch, and those, then you've got two and a half. So I do feel we need to ask for that. And then also, you know how you're using your evergreen junipers to do the perimeter screening requirement? At, when they're planted, the minimum height is thirty inches, and you've got, I think, a twenty-four. So I apologize for not seeing that before, but we do have to, you know, enforce those minimum requirements.
No problem, we can update that plan.
So we're going to accept the deviation in the quantity of the materials, but not the deviation in the size.
We can update that.
Okay. Sorry about that.
That's fine, Sue. Not a problem. So can we move on to item three? All right, item three is a determination that the proposed vehicular access plan on traffic mitigation as recommended by the applicant's traffic impact study is acceptable despite the lack of any off-site improvements to either M-59 or old US-23. Dave, any comments?
So the meeting on the twenty-fifth focused a lot on the traffic impacts of this proposed development, and there was a whole lot of discussions in, what, at least the year plus leading up to this proposal actually getting submitted. The applicant did, was required to submit a very thorough analysis of traffic impacts to both the Michigan Department of Transportation and to the Livingston County Road Commission, MDOT with jurisdiction over M-59, and the Road Commission with jurisdiction over old US-23. Both road agencies accepted the findings of the traffic impact study and including the recommendations of that study, which was to prohibit the outbound left turn from the existing Speedway drive-through, driveway, and also shift the location of the Fountain Square driveway closer to the US-23 interchange, but also create a shared driveway in so doing. Keep in mind that at the existing Speedway Fountain Square site right now, there's no connectivity between the Speedway site and the Fountain Square site. So it's not out of, you know, it's very possible that somebody pulls in to get their gas and then they also want to go pick up their pizza or pick up their dry cleaning. The way things are now, you would have to pull in, get your gas, pull back out onto M-59 and pull back in. And anytime you're creating those extra movements or unnecessary movements onto a state highway, you're creating more potential for conflict. So by creating this shared driveway, there are some concerns with shifting it closer to US-23, and we can certainly talk some more about those. But one of the potential benefits or trade-offs to that is creating that shared access. And those were the sort of trade-offs that both the Road Commission and the Department of Transportation had to look at when they looked at the traffic impact study, and the township needs to look at them too. Neither the Road Commission or the Department of Transportation are looking for further off-site mitigation than what the applicant is proposing. There was discussion of a lot of options, but both road agencies determined that the additional traffic to be generated by this proposal was not sufficient to warrant any dramatic off-site improvements. Speedway could probably speak a little bit more than I could to the CIP generation model that they generated, that they created as part of this proposal. Generally speaking, while there are more pumps being proposed, more dispensers being proposed, while there is a bigger store being proposed, Speedway contends and the Department of Transportation accepted that it's not a linear relationship where every pump you add adds so many more cars. There's something of a plateau with that. And what Speedway is contending is that, yes, they are putting in six more fuel dispensers than what they have there now, but really those six dispensers are going to simply better serve the customers they already have as opposed to increase by fifty percent the number of new customers pulling in. And I think there's some logic there. If any of us who've viewed Speedway, and I think most of us have, can agree that right now, if you pull in there at any busy time of day, there's folks waiting for the pumps. And there's some traffic concerns with that too, because as folks get backed up waiting for those pumps, they back right up out into the driveway, and then you have rear-end collision situations of people coming in off of M-59. Speedway is now providing more pumps to better and more efficiently serve the customers, and it was also pulling those pumps away from M-59, creating more spacing between M-59 and the people maneuvering through the fuel islands. So I don't want anyone to get the impression that the township, the applicant, the Road Commission, and the Department of Transportation have done anything less than looked very thoroughly at the traffic implications of this proposal. The fact is, it's a site located at, you've got a US freeway interchange on one side, you've got a busy county road on the other side, and it's being bisected by a busy state highway. There will always be a lot of traffic moving through that area. And the best that all of the public agencies can do is, as proposals like this come in front of us, make the improvements to the extent that we can. And I, the contention of your staff and the contention of the Road Commission and the Department of Transportation is that what Speedway is proposing here is an improvement to the situation that exists today.
And I will add, again, having been around a few years, that this, I believe, is the third Speedway proposal I have worked on. So you may not even know how many you've tried, but you have not been able to get it past, you have not been able to get past the traffic issue. past, you have not been able to get past the traffic issues. And I would agree, this one is different than the other ones we've seen, and Keith brought up a point at the last meeting that I believe is very valid. One of the problems we have at that site right now is it's so congested inside that people can't get in at times, which causes the backup in the left turn lane. I think the internal circulation is going to be greatly improved, so I think that there's an opportunity to improve things there. And also, having built, worked on a lot of projects in the township, just for those listening, I think what we all need to keep in mind is exactly the location of this site. And the highway department, MDOT and Livingston County are not going to hold one four-acre site to improve all the traffic problems at that intersection. I travel that intersection every day. I know that intersection very well, and it's very frustrating, and the Speedway people have certainly can tell you, I haven't been a friend of theirs when it's come to the traffic, but there's a realization that you can only do so much. You can only take it so far, and when you've got your two governing agencies that are controlling the road that we have no say over, giving their, finally giving their blessing to it, you have to look at it and realize, maybe this is the best we're going to do. Because we're not going to shut you off. They will not close, just so you know, MDOT will not close Speedway's driveway on M-59. The second they tell them they're not going to have access off of M-59 will be the day they're in court, because they have access already, and they can't be denied access. So, we all need to keep that in mind. And they get the benefit of the corner, and they've got the other side of it, so...
All right. If I could throw one more point into that conversation, so where the mobile gas station had been, Speedway is acquiring that and turning that into additional surface parking for Fountain Square, which anyone who's ever tried to get dinner at Fountain Square at 6 o'clock on a Friday can agree, there needs to be more parking there. But the bigger issue with that is, that site could just as easily been, could just as easily be acquired by another commercial developer, and that could be the site of not a mobile gas station again, but, say, a coffee shop or another traffic generator. And whatever that new traffic generator could be, they would also, as Chair Fox just mentioned, be entitled to access out onto M-59. MDOT would have to give, whatever that, let's say it's a coffee shop, would have to give them access on M-59. What this proposal does is, at least for the very foreseeable future, eliminates that possibility of another traffic generator being shoehorned into this corner. And that, I think, is another one of the benefits of this proposal, is that we know that there is not going to be another new traffic generator taking over the mobile gas site. And I think it's relevant, because if there were, not only would that be additional traffic, but it would be at least one more commercial driveway out onto M-59.
And Dave, before your time, we had a meeting for Tim Hortons to build there, just for those that would like to know. So, and our biggest issue was traffic again, so...
There's a lot of benefits with what Speedway is offering, and there's some drawbacks. And what this body, road commission, department of transportation have had to weigh very heavily is, do those benefits outweigh the drawbacks? And the recommendation of staff, road commission, department of transportation, is that, yes, benefits of this outweigh the drawbacks.
Any comments from anybody on traffic? Okay. So, we are accepting a determination that the proposed vehicular access plan on traffic mitigation, as recommended, is acceptable. Tess, agreeable?
Yes.
Joe, you're good? Okay. Let's move to item five and skip four. A determination that the proposed outdoor seating may exceed 25% of the capacity of the proposed indoor building. Dave, can you highlight that for us?
Yeah, so, that is one of the requirements of having an outdoor seating area, is that, just that, it cannot exceed 25%. The applicant is showing, correct me if I'm wrong, three outdoor tables, each with four seats around them.
Correct.
And that exceeds the tables that are proposed on the floor plan of the inside of the restaurant, or that they're calling a speedy cafe. The planning commission does have the authority to allow an increase, allow that 25% to be exceeded if they so choose.
Yeah, there, right here is the outdoor seating, and then the indoor seating is in this area here.
Is probably equal or pretty close to being equal in terms of number of seats.
Anybody have an issue with that?
26 seats, it looks like, are proposed inside, and then it'd be a six, or 12 outside. I can be mad.
So, you're closer to 50% than 25%.
It would appear as though the nodding of the heads while you guys were chatting there that we're fine with that. If they feel three tables, three tables are fine.
I would be remiss if I didn't mention that Commissioner Voight, who couldn't be here tonight, but did provide some comments, which I have in front of me, one of them was, if they eliminated one of the tables, would that get them closer to 25%? So, if you were sitting here, that would be the question he would ask.
It would get them closer, because anything less would get you closer. I guess the question is, are you still okay with three?
I'm okay with three.
I'm okay.
Okay, we're okay with three. All right, back to item four, or to item four. A waiver by the planning commission on the requirements of section 5.2 for natural clay brick in lieu of the scored quick brick.
Yeah, I don't know how to address it. I can appreciate what Mr. Mitchell said, you know? I mean, I think it's good-looking, it's got good color, but I guess I'm just trying to know how we go past what we held so firmly to. I don't understand it. I think if I was making the rules today, these products are coming along so well, the intent is getting there, maybe what we originally, you know, had gone, and now those products weren't there, but today, they're getting closer and closer. So, I guess I don't know what to do.
I think that's a very good point. I mean, when we look at architectural standards like this and determine what, you know, products we would like, we've been faced with some newer stuff lately that is, that we reconsidered and, you know, originally, you know, when he showed the, when they showed the Speedway in Chelsea, you know, I mean, from the road, I think it doesn't have a whole lot of difference, but I'm curious what other people think.
So, I would agree with Commissioner Mitchell's comments, but also when we look at a photograph of a building, and you're driving up to that building, is it a proportional difference that I see? Because the brick is a little bit larger, you know, height and length, but the wall in the building is also a little bit larger than a home that you would normally see. But this is not a home, we're talking about businesses. If it were right next to another, you know, one of the clay buildings that you're talking about, Joe, I could see the difference. Does this look good? Of course it looks good. Does it look proportional? I don't think it looks unproportional, but I have a concern where Sue is at with it, is that, you know, we have these, you know, rules, I guess if I can just call it that, for reasons, and why did we come up with it? Was it because at the time, that's the product that was available, and since then, we've got these new products that are available for a lot of good reasons? And so, does that mean, you know, once we accept it, no different than other things that we've seen here, if you're going to accept it for one project, you have to be prepared to accept it for another project? So, this is where, you know, I think the conversation has to go beyond this one, is that if we like it, then maybe that means that the ordinance changes. So, I guess in a nutshell, do I think it looks good? Of course it looks good. If I bend to that Speedway, I have, for the record, I guess. So, I'm not really sure where, what to go, where to go from here, quite honestly.
I guess my thoughts are on it. I am a little bit more particular, and I do think when they're together, you can tell the difference. We have a great project here, by the way. But I believe that if you look at the ordinance, we have an area where we do permit block or don't permit block, and you can throw a little color at it, but that has no texture to it. And it does look like tinted cinder block to me. And I am torn also, but I'm very concerned on what's going to happen to the rest of the community if we open the door on this right now. And I believe that maybe this was or wasn't available at the time that that standard went into place, so I can't speak to that, but I know we didn't include it if it was out there. But, you know, I'm the person that if you walk up to Walmart, I can see the difference between that and walking up to Myers. You're right, some people can't. But that's my opinion.
Huge cost difference.
I think he said 10%.
Cost and time, I think, too.
I think it's time.
A lot of it is time, because the time it takes to do two walls as opposed to do one and have the structure ready to go.
Well, if you built, to be honest with you, I thought about that, because you can, that's like laying cinder block. You could lay a cinder block building and put the structure up and be dealing with the roof and the inside while they're face-bricking the outside with the clay brick, which is the way most of the buildings in the community are built.
Yeah, again, the time to do the second step, which is the clay brick, and the cost to do two separate.
At $2.99 a gallon right now, I'm not worried about your cost. That's not my concern, okay? I'm sure that Speedway in this community has done very well, and that's not the standard by which I hold them to the clay brick versus the masonry. The masonry brick just hasn't been used. But don't plead financial, you know, here with one of the few gas stations in town. And I agree, a lot of us shop there, but most of us don't, because most of us wouldn't buy gas here at the price they charge in Hartland versus running uptown to another place. And it's been spoken here, that's not anything new.
Right, that's no secret.
That is no secret. The other day before, and before this $2.99 thing last week, there was 69 cents difference between Hartland and Davison at Speedway, before this bump this week.
No, it bumped, because that happened, I...
No, not this week, I'm talking like...
Okay, because this week I noticed it went up.
Well, there's a refinery problem, and I don't want to get off target and all of those types of things, but financial hardship was never in the zoning ordinance as a reason to not follow.
But on that note, I drive from Flynn every day, and I go by the Miller Road Speedway and Blank Road Speedway, and then I come to the Speedway.
Yep, what's the difference? 30, 40 cents a gallon every day.
And the Speedway in Milford, he has a war with the guy across the street. They're constantly battling, and I, he's routinely the lowest around. So...
So, where are we with it? Where are you with it? You've heard what we've had to say. Are you sticking with that? Is that all you can do?
You had mentioned that the Walmart had added some site improvements to...
Well, yeah, they went, if you look at their landscaping plan, they donated, I don't know what it was, 10 or 12 acres to the land conservancy. They paid millions of dollars to help build out M-59, so they were in a stratosphere that a four-acre gas station wouldn't be. So, I mean, they were totally...
And they were one part of a planned development, a bigger planned development, which by its nature requires recognizable benefits, and there, by its nature, there's trade-offs between the township and the applicant.
But I think the scale of that project was what caused that to happen, so... And Meyer chose to participate in the same capacity, but chose to build the clay brick building. Now, they put up concrete poured walls and then face-bricked the whole thing, so that's how the Myers store is built. And all I'm saying is, the time element would go away if you were to build a cinder block building, put your structure on your roof while you're going, and put your face clay brick on it while they're working on the inside. I mean, I look at how different buildings are being done right now, and that's typically how they are done. There's usually the two structures, so... Where do you guys want to go with it?
Do we vote?
We have to determine whether you're going to give them the waiver...
For that or not?
...of the architectural standard or not. You just have to say yes or no.
Well, right now, I'm going to have to say no. If we're going to vote individually how to get past this, I just can't say yes.
Well, you need, yeah...
Can we just omit that one? Can we?
Well, no, I mean, we've got to get to the end.
Okay.
So, we've got to get to the end. We have to, Dave is stating, and he is correct, we need to, if you want to call it, grant an architectural waiver.
Okay.
So, what we were doing is, in these five items, is a knot of the heads of, do you support that or don't you support that? So, do you have to say individually where you are with it? I guess you do, in the end, have to say where you are with it. The sad part of all of this is, this is a great program, and I like so much of what you're doing there, and I think it can be a great asset. Just don't know if I can get over that component yet or not.
Part of what could be part of this conversation, too, is procedurally, this does have to go to the township board for approval of the use. And the planning commission does have to make a recommendation on the special land use. They don't necessarily have to do it tonight, and they don't necessarily have to do it before they're satisfied with the site plan elements such as the building material. One option could be, if there's an impetus to keep things moving forward, the planning commission could take action on a recommendation on the special land use conditional upon the site plan element coming back before this planning commission for a continuation of the conversation about the building materials.
Well, I think we've had, you and I've had this conversation.
I have. I've waited a while to throw that out there.
Yeah, you did, didn't you? We have opposing points of view. I see no reason to push a special land use through if you haven't agreed on what the site plan is.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
I mean, why?
If it's on the board, then where do we go with that?
Right.
So, why can't we just do a simple knot of heads, whether we're in agreement to waive the natural clay versus...
That's what I'm asking for.
Yeah. And majority rolls it.
No, that is the way it's going to go.
Yeah.
Joe, can I say no? Clay?
Clay.
Okay. Need you to work on some clay brick.
Can we get approval with the condition that it's just, so elevations are revised to be acclaimed, right? Would that be a condition of approval?
I would be comfortable with that, but I don't want to speak for the planning commission. I, if we did want to go that route, then I guess I would want to hear some more specifics of the size of the clay brick, the color blend, because if you're going to entrust me to approve a submittal without coming back before you, then I want to know exactly what I'm looking for.
Well, I would think we could look to the other site plans. I think you'll see all the buildings are of that size, are of a standard size, standard brick, not a jumbo brick. And then the color tone is going to be in of the red to red-brown range, similar to those colors across the street.
Okay, so that's part of, you know, there was a point where I said, you know, can we differentiate color from size and material? Is that color, if they came back with a natural clay brick of that color palette? If you so choose to give me administrative approval over a natural clay brick, is that the color palette I would be looking for?
A nicer, richer tone would be, a warmer, richer tone would be nice. Does that help you out?
If you so choose to give me that authority.
All right. Well, I would be comfortable with this with a condition that it comes back with a clay brick, with that condition on it, giving Dave or staff...
And it comes back to you or it comes out to me?
Comes back to Dave.
Yeah.
I would be comfortable with that.
I'd be okay with that.
That way, it can be, you wouldn't have to come back, toss.
Good. That's what I was trying to kind of ask earlier, do not ask, so I agree completely.
Would you be all right with that?
Great, fine.
You comfortable with the palette?
I'm flattered that you entrust me.
There have been bigger decisions you've had to make.
If and when we were, we get to a motion this evening, there were a couple other things that Commissioner Voight wanted to touch on and... things that Commissioner Voight wanted to touch on, and I don't want to lose sight of those. I also know that Commissioner Grissom had some suggestions about sidewalks, and I don't know.
Well, and I think that's right where we are now, because I was going to ask you, we've gotten through your five points that we need to discuss.
Okay.
And I think we're good with four of them, and one of them we're going to do as a condition of approval with the clay brick. And now, was there anything else that anybody had? So this would be the time, anything additional, you have Sue or Dave or anyone?
I'm asking on behalf of Keith, Keith Voight, who's our secretary, who couldn't be here this evening. The drainage on the gas canopy, does it go to the underground drain and then storm drain with everything else? It doesn't just, okay? Is that somehow noted on the plans? And if not, could it be?
Um, yeah, the CG plan, it should show. Zoom in there. Not show quite as, it will be definitely in the detailed engineering plans. We do show the full storm. We show the pipe run starts from one end of the canopy drains down, they all connect together, and then the six inch pipe which connects it to a structure.
And then ultimately out to the, via-
Yeah, goes right into the storm system-
Yes.
-with everything else.
Okay. And, all right, so let's make sure we have that noted on the construction plans. His other comment was about the tables, the outdoor tables, we addressed that. He concurs with the recommendations of staff on the lighting standards, and his other comments had to do with signage, and as we covered, signage is under a separate permit application. So that is something that I'll take under consideration if and when we get to a signed permit application.
Okay. That was all for Keith?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Dave. Do you have some comments?
I had something on sidewalks. I think Dave already kind of showed you, I did a real quick sketch, just talking about some more connections.
I'm going to-
Yeah, switch it over?
Yes.
I want to, you guys just-
Go back to that.
Yeah, Dave did share this with me already previously, and we did take a look at it. The only concern we originally had was grading, because some of the slopes are pretty steep right in this area and in this area here.
Yeah.
We did take a look at it, and we believe we can make it work. It'll probably be like a three to one slope falling back to the curb.
I saw that, yeah.
But it, we can make it work, and we can do that, it's just-
Sure. So I'll just run through it with the rest of you, just kind of proposing, or we'll see if I can do this. So the first one is this walk right here. Currently, where it is in the site plan, there's our parking, and then there's a hedge, and then the walk. So what I was recommending is that the walk just abut the parking, so then your car overhang, and then you can get on the walk, you're not going through a hedge to get onto the sidewalk connection over to Speedway. So it just made a lot more sense even for maintenance-wise, so your car isn't on a hedge, all of that. The other one I recommended was a connection from 23, Old 23, just coming across here, so we didn't have a connection to get to the store. Because again, we were just trying to have more connections. Do you guys agree with that? And then the third one was harder, because there is that slope going down the hill. And even like if that sidewalk was like next to the curb, it's less steep, I know, but it feels better when you're not right next to the curb on a sidewalk. But the idea was is a connection, because that goes right up to the stores, that's the Fountain Square. Currently, the walk that they've got basically ends right there, and then you're just kind of out into this area. But it was just a continuation of the walk, they've already started to get to the stores as well. So then it just kind of has that interstigation to this comment.
Sue, I think those are real good suggestions. That's going to be good for the store.
Correct.
Because it's going to bring good, there's going to be walking traffic, because we're in that mall area often. And really, if there was, if you're going to be walking the parking lot, it's not safe, but it's not convenient.
But we'll say, though, that that gets a lot, that will get a lot of traffic. And I know people come in from the other, you know, strip, to the south, they use that as a cut through to get to the highway, and there's a lot of traffic in and out of there. It may need some other types of signage down there to slow things up a little bit. There's only now one stop sign at the, I think, where it ends there with your sign.
And maybe, I mean, I know we've seen it in other plans, but like right here, you might want to just strike across the walk with paint.
You can add a cross-stripe.
You know, maybe, I don't know how to do that one, that one's crazy, but-
Yeah, Joe, I think there's a stop sign right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Yeah. And this walk right here, this one, that now will have the car overhang on, and then you can get onto, I recommend that it get a little wider, like seven feet, because the cars usually take the overhang a couple feet, and then you still want the width of the walk.
Sue, that's just very smart, because over, can't think of the name of the mall right now, west of Kroger, they have that, right out in front of the card shop, where you pull right up, and you're not even walking across the grass, you step right on.
Yeah.
So that's very convenient. As soon as you said that, I threw that picture in my mind, so that's a nice idea.
Okay, well, thank you for-
Yeah, no problem. We have no objection adding, no sidewalks to the plan.
Okay, were there any other questions? Comments from anyone? Okay. I believe that at the bottom of page 20, you will find some language from our planning director or planning department. And we will need to include if we show, are so inclined to include the clay brick statement.
Right. I think I heard at least three possible additions to, yeah, three possible additions to the possible conditions for your approval. One would be that all the plant material must meet the minimum plant sizes of the Township zoning ordinance. One would be inclusion of the additional internal sidewalks consistent with the concept proposed by Commissioner Grissom, including crosswalk striping in appropriate locations. And perhaps the biggest one is revising the building elevations and the building materials to include a natural clay brick rather than a scored tinted concrete block.
To be approved by the planning director.
Yes. But it would be administrative approval of all those things. I understand your intent to be that this not come back to the Planning Commission to verify these things.
As much as we like them.
Yeah.
Yes.
Dave, one question I had, and you touched on it, but was it in regards to the, any other brick used on the property? Was that also to be the, so it'd be clay brick everywhere?
I would, I assume that's your intent, and I appreciate that, I think that's worth noting in the motion that, you know, updating to natural clay brick, not just on the principal building, but also on the, anywhere else where there is a masonry material proposed.
Well, yeah, because we had discussed that it all had to match the building.
Yes.
The shed, the dumpster enclosure, the wall, the fence, pile of stuff.
And our fence details, you call out building, or to match building materials?
Yes.
Not specific quick brick or any?
Right. Right. Okay. So Dave has laid out the additional conditions that were discussed this evening, so if you are so inclined, starting at the bottom of page 20, carrying over into 21. Go for it, Sue, come on.
Oh, no.
We'll help you.
Try it, yeah, please help me, I don't want to mess it up. Okay, so I make a motion to move to approve the site plan with special land use application number 531 for a Speedway fuel convenience station and speedy cafe, along with a proposed improvement to the Fountain Square Shopping Center as presented on the site located south of M59 and east of Old 23, conditioned upon the following. One, approval of the special land use permit by the Heartland Township Board of Trustees. And two, submittal and approval of the pollution incidence protection plan, PIPP. And three, review and approval of the easement language for parking, cross-access, use and utilities as part of a separate land division application. And four, compliance with all requirements of the DPW Director, Fire Marshal, and Township Engineer on the forthcoming construction plans. And, now we go to the list. Okay. One, let's see here.
It's going to be five.
Pardon me?
Yeah, it'd be number five.
Number five, yeah. That the landscape plan as proposed satisfies the intent of section 511 with some proposed deviations, despite some proposed deviations from a strict application of its standards. Do I add in now? I could add in the-
Actually, all you needed to do was go five and then request the change that the plant material meets the size, and isn't that what you're looking for, Dave?
Yeah, yes, I would say something to effect of administrative verification that all the plant material meets the minimum size requirements of the zoning ordinance.
Sounds good.
Are we good there? Second move to the next, yes? Okay, so now we'll talk about the building materials.
Okay.
That we're proposing that the plan be resubmitted using the natural clay brick on the all masonry portions, the building, the piers, all of it. And that that clay will be approved by the planning director. Is that good enough for that one?
Yes.
Okay. And then we talked about the sidewalks, that the plan would have the inclusion of the sidewalks we discussed tonight, with potentially some extra crosshatching where it's deemed in the roadway to make things safe. What else?
I think that's it.
Is that it?
Those were the three that I was aware of. I don't know if there was any other ones that voted pass.
Second from Commissioner Kalani.
Yeah, I was supposed to say, don't you have to put in the lighting, Ed?
No.
That would be the statement.
About?
It would be, I'm, I'll try, it would be noted in the minutes that there was a consensus of the Planning Commission that the deviations from the lighting were acceptable.
Yeah, yeah, those five items, we just went with a nod of the heads consensus statement, and it'll all be documented.
Okay.
So, okay, let me get back to, so we have a motion from Commissioner Grissom, a second from Commissioner Kalani to move to approve the site plan with special land use, with special land use for application number 531. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those make motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you very much.
So procedurally, Township Board meeting September 1st, September 1st, so you should likely put that on your calendars.
Okay.
We'll give them a minute to pull their computers down, and then we'll have our call to the public.
I'm not keeping them in my office.
All right, we'll move to item nine, call to the public. You sat this long, I know you have to come and tell us. Absolutely. All right.
My name is Dick Trigger, I live on Bent Road in Heartland. Two items, one, Butterfly Garden is really kind of nice, whatever part the Planning Commission took in that, congratulations, it's a really nice job. The second item is, just thank you for looking at the pedestrian and traffic safety at the previous discussion with Speedway. I am rather concerned, though, about the pedestrian crossing of the access road into Fountain Square, especially if vehicles are parked there and young children are going to run into the convenience store, which will probably happen. So please make certain that that has adequate sightlines and maybe even a speed limit sign or something in that area to prevent future action, so, thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. And we'll close call to the public, and we'll move to item 10, the planners' report.
So I'm going to, I know I have one written down, I'll wing it. The softball complex has resubmitted and is likely to be on the Planning Commission's agenda for the late August meeting, two weeks from tonight, it'll be the 27th. We're in the process of reviewing that right now, but based on what we've seen so far, we think it'll be ready for reconsideration by the Planning Commission in a couple weeks. Wall at Ridge Estates, which is the proposed Homes North Adventure Church, they tell us that they want to get on to a September Planning Commission agenda, so we can expect to see that one, that one's moving forward. The proposed gas station at the northeast corner of Clark and M59, the ball is still in the applicant's court, as they say, they're in the process of revising, but their intent is to resubmit. So I, we do not know when that would be back in front of the Planning Commission. I know the members of the public are very interested to know that, and the answer is we don't know that yet. We will know more once the applicant has had a chance to revise and resubmit. And as Chair Fox is aware, there are a number of concepts that folks have floated past me that are warrant having an informal concept meeting with our site plan committee, Chair Fox and Secretary Voight, and we're going to do our best to accommodate all those concept meetings here in the next week or two. And likely, if all goes well, then those concepts become real submittals that come before the Planning Commission shortly thereafter. So we continue to see a lot of economic development being proposed, and so we'll continue to be busy both at the staff level and the Planning Commission level, so keep your pencils sharp.
Good deal. Thanks, Dave. Anyone for committee reports, comments, anyone? Motion to adjourn, please.
So moved. It's important.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close the day. Motion carries. Good night and thank you.